I used to pick on my mom and tray. I don't have a tray, but I got about a half a tray. But it's a, because I can carry seventy-seven.
So they can only cover so far.
Whatever.
Yeah, but they're in a percentage.
Blood pressure.
Yeah, they do. He said something about, um, put the grabber down, so drive.
Get this bad boy started.
Yeah, well, they got their one part, they got their.
Call to meeting, the order, everybody can stand for pledge, at moment of silence please.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, could we have roll call, please?
President Peters?
Here.
Uh, Councilman Eads?
Here.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Here.
Councilman Hayes?
Present.
Councilman Hitt?
Here.
Councilman, Councilwoman Traynor?
Here.
Councilman Stahl?
Present.
Councilman Norman?
Present.
Hey, everybody get a chance to take the minutes from September nineteenth meeting. Questions or concerns, uh, here and then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, no pub appearances tonight, uh, no communications or announcements, apparently no audience concerns, on to committee reports, Greg?
Personnel and Finance Committee will next meet on October twenty-first at five-thirty, have nothing new to report since the last meeting, however, um, I know I sent everyone a copy, everyone on council, a copy or an email regarding the agenda and meeting management software from Civic Plus. I had shared that with our clerk and he was able to, um, watch the videos and I was going to ask for his input on that tonight, um, so maybe he can fill you in a little bit on that also, Mr. Clerk?
Um, yeah, I was able to spend some time this week watching the videos on the agenda and meeting management. Um, it seemed really like it could streamline the process, especially with the agenda items, um, and then also kind of standardizing the meeting minutes, especially because it would kind of keep it consistent throughout. Uh, it'd also help with inside the meeting with, you know, first, seconds, voting, I can do that all within the platform easily, keeps track of it all for you, um, and you know, sometimes that's the worst, most meticulous parts about the minutes, it's like getting all that done, so that kind of automatically throws it in for you. Um, it also helps with like creating the packet you guys are get, that you guys are getting every week, every two weeks, um, you know, right now, you're kind of having to take all that, put it all into a PDF, then put it into Adobe, which is a separate system that you actually have to pay for, um, and then put it all together versus that kind of will throw it all out, once you upload it into the system, it throws it all for you into one packet, which would be helpful, and then everything would be in one place too, versus you mean a bunch of Word documents here, the PDFs, it could all be in the system, so, those are my thoughts.
Now, I asked you before tonight's meeting, you had filled in for Arlene Duffy, what, what differences do you see now compared to then, and is the job easier or harder because of technology or, or what?
Um, I think it's a little more complex, especially, you know, I think the first thing is harder is the newspaper is not printed every day, so making sure to get public hearings in on time and sending out, um, you know, sending out legislation to the paper afterwards. Um, also just, you know, um, the meticulousness of trying to get everything set up, um, every meeting and not missing anything, um, that's kind of, yeah, it's a, some differences, a lot more technology now versus back then, you know, there wasn't YouTube streaming, um, back then, um, so, yeah.
And you think that software will help, help you out?
Oh, I think it would help out tremendously, yeah.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for the clerk on that?
So are we trading in another software? He mentioned he was doing with some, things with something else we had to pay for.
No, this would be something else we pay for, but it would be a platform that would be very consistent because I think as he explained, documents may come into him in different formats and they have to be somehow put together for us to get to those. I don't have to do that part thankfully, but... So Civic Plus is the company we just bought the recreation software from. I did, in the email, I, I stated that, uh, they had mentioned that there would be a discount if we have more than one program. They did say they would honor a ten percent discount on the annual fee moving forward if there's more than one program with Civic Plus. And if you didn't get a chance to read the email, just very, and we're, I want to bring this up at finance, um, so I'm just trying to give everybody heads up in case you have any questions between now and then. Uh, there is a cost, it's a thousand dollar setup for the one program and forty-two hundred dollars a year, I'm not including the ten percent discount. Um, that allows for two different, uh, two different committees, groups to use it, so for example, it could be council in the planning commission, they could use the same software. Um, it's got so, it's, what I like, honestly, there's going to be a search engine that indexes the contents of what we put in there, and if you need, you can't remember when did we talk about this, but you knew it was about junk vehicles, we're going to discuss tonight, you could type that in, it's going to find that for you, which is kind of nice. Uh, they, they have a second or a larger version of that, the, the setup fee is fifteen hundred dollars, the annual fee is fifty-two hundred dollars, that allows up to five different users, so you could potentially say council and the three committees and the planning commission could all use the same software for that, uh, or it could be the Parks and Rec Commission, for example, or the Board of Zoning Appeals, I mean, they could all use this and be very consistent across that.
Just wondering with all the different fees we pay for all the different softwares, is there something we can get that we just like combine them all so we could eliminate some or?
Well, I, they probably, Civic Plus probably has everything, including they could have set up the website and, you know, I mean, they could have done all of those things, um, but I don't know if there's an all-in-one out there.
What was the question I could, I couldn't understand?
He wanted to know if, um, if there was an all-in-one program that would do all of these things, and Civic Plus probably can cover most of those things. That's all I have.
Brett?
Public Service on the eighth, five o'clock, and Public Safety at six on the eighth, right next door here.
Rich?
Uh, nothing.
All right, Andy?
I have nothing.
Shannon?
Nope.
John?
Nothing.
Mike?
I got nothing.
All right, US City official reports.
All right. Good evening and thanks to all of you for coming out tonight. I do want to start off by remembering Richard Dick Minter. When I was appointed to London City Council, I had the honor of serving with Mr. Minter. You always knew where you stood with him, but he was a wealth of knowledge. Working in the London Fire Department for thirty-eight years and, and being the chief, he knew a lot about this city and cared deeply for this community. I would also like to remember James DeLonge, or as most of us knew him, was Speedy. Speedy also worked for the City of London, I knew him in the Parks and Rec Department. Definitely a man of few words, but a very hardworking man. I appreciate everything they did for London and for myself and for this community. They will be missed and I would like to give my condolences to both of their families and friends. We did have two comprehensive planning sessions for stakeholders of community development on Monday, September twenty-third. Both of the sessions were very productive and a lot was accomplished. We have added a section to our website dedicated to the comprehensive plan to give information and updates. You can find this information at londonohio.gov on the homepage. City of London Parks and Recreation Department will be hosting the Cowling Park Pumpkin Palooza. The event will be held at Cowling Park on Saturday, October twelfth, from eleven AM to three PM. We have a lot of great things scheduled and it's a free and fun family event, bounce houses, face painting, a magician, free pumpkins to decorate with stickers for the First Hunter Kids, a mini pumpkin pie eating contest, cotton candy, food trucks, mini goat petting zoo, sidewalk chalk, safety service, touch a truck, I mean, and just seems like Eve adds something new every day to it, so it's going to be just a fantastic event, so... We're also inviting some other local groups to come participate, I know the Strawberry Festival is coming down.
London Lions.
Michael Norman will be there.
That's right, no, London Lions will be there.
All the Lions are coming?
Lions.
Like I said, she adds something new every day.
Excuse me, Mayor, what did you say for the First Hundred Kids?
You get a free pumpkin?
Okay.
No, not me. Kid a heart of it. What, no, we're not carving it, we're not giving knives to children. Um, sometimes they will do like where you paint them, but I went to an event once where you had to paint it and the paint does not dry in time on a pumpkin, so you're carrying a wet pumpkin into your car, so we're getting these like stickers that look like pumpkin faces, like carved out faces and you put...
So we don't need to bring our own knives?
No, please, no, 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 thank you. Um, but make sure you check, check it out and, and check out our Facebook page for more details, we have an event set up for, for it, there's a fourteen-hundred respondents, there's like a thousand people, over a thousand people interested in it, so should be a good event. The Battle of the Cans Food Drive is currently going on, and that's London versus Jonathan Alder, it'll end at the game on Friday, October fourth tomorrow. Bridges Community Action in partnership with London Jonathan Alder, school districts will be holding this food drive. Students still have time to bring, uh, items into school tomorrow, citizens can still drop stuff off here tomorrow at City Hall, Twenty South Main, and then the night of the game, tomorrow night, you can bring stuff to the game and there'll be two different tables set up there, one for London, one for Alder, you could drop off canned goods at the game itself, Community Action will be counting, um, and then the winning school will receive bragging rights and a traveling trophy, but the biggest winner will be those in need, and, um, I do want to thank Walmart. Walmart, I don't want to say how many items they donated because I don't want Plain City to find out what we're at, but...
Because they got cost.
They donated quite a few items today, quite a few, I'll give you guys the number next time, but quite a few items, we went out to the school with them today and delivered them all, and there was, I'll just say there was a lot, so thank you to Walmart. Since they've been doing the renovations, they've reached out, they have a new lady kind of out there in charge, and she reached out and wanted to have a meeting, and they just want to get more involved in the community, so when this came up, I emailed them and it was, didn't take long for them to say yes and, and get us a lot of items, so thank you to Walmart and their continued partnership with the city. I was able to attend the Skill, Skills Trade Fair hosted by Ohio Mean Jobs of Madison County. This is a great event for the youth of the community, giving them opportunity to speak to local businesses and, you know, just kind of contemplate their future and what they're looking to do. That was held out at the fairgrounds the, uh, last week, but a wonderful event put on by them. Um, also had the honor of going and speaking to the kids and, and reading a book to some of the children at PCC, which is Presbyterian Child Care. With the help of the Parks and Recreation Department and our executive assistant, Eve Breedlove, um, we've been really able to promote our facility rentals over the past year, and this includes this room, the room next door, Cowling Park Shelter, Mary Mac, I mean, just pretty much everything, and it looks like we will double the revenue on facility rentals that we had last year. So I just want to congratulate them and thank them for their hard work getting it out, making sure people are seeing the space, um, so we can keep them rentals going, but doubling the revenue is, is quite the feat, so congratulations to them and thank you. Uh, tonight, you do have the DORA, the Designated Outdoor Refreshment Area Legislation in front of you. We sent out surveys to the downtown businesses about the implementation of a DORA in the area. We have received thirty-eight responses back from downtown businesses and around ninety-five percent are in support of the DORA. This legislation will need a public hearing and I believe that will need to be held on November twenty-first, so just a heads up on that, I believe it needs a public hearing. City of London Trick or Treat will be held on Halloween, Thursday, October thirty-first, from six to eight PM with no alternative dates. Like I said, if citizens are worried about the weather, I encourage them to attend some of the trunk or treats that will be leading up to the thirty-first. I am going to start posting them very soon and getting those out there. I bet I have about eight or nine images right now of ones going on around town, um, I wanted to wait for a couple more to come in and then put out a big sheet of all of them, so if a group is hosting a trunk or treat, please reach out to us and we'll help you get the word out on that. And you can also find the information about all the community trunk or treats and all the events going on around this time on the Community Events page at londonohio.gov. I want to apologize, but I will be unable to attend the October seventeenth City Council meeting, I will be attending the Madison County Chamber of Commerce's Bonanza, so if you have any questions about legislation or anything before that meeting, please feel free to reach out, come in the office, shoot me an email, give me a call if you have any questions for myself before that meeting. Molo Fun Fact is in number three, that is how long the Mayor's Cup Trophy has been in existence and also the number of years that the City of London has retained it. The Mayor's Cup Trophy is given to the winner of the London versus that team up north, varsity football game, also known as the Battle of Forty-Two. Myself and Mayor Carney of Plain City thought it would be fun to start this tradition and add more excitement to this rivalry. Mayor Carney doesn't know how it feels to have the trophy and I want to keep it that way, so please come out and support your London Red Raiders this Friday at Jonathan Alder High School, game will start at seven, I would suggest to get there early, there's, their visitor's site is not very big, limited seating, and, uh, come watch us win the trophy for about the fourth time. So thank you for your time, does anyone have any questions for me or questions about tonight's legislation?
No, I'm just, uh, the DORA legislation, um, public hearing due November seventh.
Oh, I apologize, hear you.
Yeah. That was on the ball and got that in.
Look at that, man, sorry about that.
Yep, so...
And I, I do have a question that I could ask that later, but it was an analysis, you brought it up.
Go ahead.
What, the DORA itself, what prompted that? Was that, uh, local businesses?
Yeah.
Local groups, was that the City of London that took the lead?
So, local businesses started talking about it as we started getting more local businesses downtown, um, we were approached about it, you know, I was like, oh, you know, kind of thinking about it, is this something that we want to do right now, or do we want more businesses to come in, how do we want to do this, and then, so, I went and, and met with, uh, Andy Warnock and talked to him about it because he has buildings in areas that have a DORA, and, you know, he was like, he said, you're getting a lot of businesses now, but this could be something that could spur more businesses to come, so you might be able to get a brewery or a winery to come in because you guys have that DORA, it could be that little piece that kind of pushes somebody over the edge to come here, or a restaurant, um, and it made sense that, yeah, if you have those things and people, and then also, you know, I'm constantly talking to businesses downtown, and one thing they always talk about is more foot traffic, right? So if somebody can come down and have a drink and walk around and go into the businesses and on a nice evening, you know, I think it's a good thing.
The, the businesses themselves, they could say, no alcohol allowed?
Yeah, yeah, they can put a sign up that says no alcohol and on premise or in their building or whatever, yeah, they're, they're well in their rights to do that.
Thank you.
Yep. Anyone else?
I don't have anything for the mayor, I, I was waiting on Rex.
Go ahead.
Rex, do you have anything?
Um, yeah, I just want to update, we've had several meetings, um, I think it's been publicized that, uh, we put out to bid for an RFQ for, uh, construction manager for the Police Department project, we had nine applicants submit their, uh, RFQs to us, we whittled it down to three, and we had a meeting and interviewed all three of them yesterday, and we've decided to go with Alfred Construction Company, um, it was unanimous vote by the committee to select them, um, and I'll probably have some other updates, we can talk about it, uh, Safety and, and Finance, it's all got.
Uh, so I have two questions, uh, how's our sanitation supervisor, is he still scheduled to come back?
I hate to go into it too deeply because of...
No, you can't.
...but he is scheduled to come back later this month.
Okay.
Pending, pending release.
And then, um, how's the sign coming along?
The sign's been ordered somewhere probably between here and China, so it's probably sitting out there on a ship, waiting to be unloaded, it would be my guess.
Do, do we have a date when we're going to break ground on the, the Police Department?
Well, we'll talk about, more about that in our committees, because it's going to be a lengthy conversation.
And I, I have a question also, Mr. Castle, uh, today, or in the last couple of days, I received another call about the address on East High Street with the junk vehicles, and I know we're addressing junk vehicles later on, um, and I don't know that this will solve their problem. It was also brought up that they've got dozens, if not at least a hundred tires stored behind the house, uh, I've looked through the ordinances, I don't see an ordinance that specifies that, I don't know if there is one or if there's anything we can do, or should this fall to the Health Department, or what do we do if that's the complaint?
Well, as far as junk is concerned, that does fall under the jurisdiction of a building and zoning, you can't have your yard junked up. The problem is, we have to have permission to get in one of these side yards to be able to get a look at it and get pictures made. Um, just an example, we had a complaint about chickens and a rooster being at somebody's place, but it was two doors down, and I talked to Steve about it and Steve goes, unless I can get a permission by somebody next door, I feasibly can't get a good look and a good picture and, you know, assess, so that, you know, things in the backyard, we do have to have access to be able to view that and get documentation, but it should warrant a code violation.
Yeah, I would suggest just having them reach out to us, I, we get them all the time, um, and then we send them on and I'm pretty good about staying up on it and asking for updates of if they're in the system, how's it going, what are we doing, and stuff's pretty good about sending emails back of, I've sent the letter, we're starting to process, or like I said, I can't get pictures from this angle, and then we tell them and maybe they can get us access somehow, so, yeah, just have them reach out to us.
If getting pictures is a problem, um, would you think about maybe getting a drone for things like that?
You're still getting, you're still allowed to go in somebody's backyard.
What's that?
You're still technically not allowed to go in somebody's backyard unless you give their permission.
Yeah, that'd be a Jennifer question.
Yeah, because...
Yeah, I mean, you wouldn't have to go in their yard to launch it, you'd launch it from the street or from a public area.
Yeah, public airspace starts with the Department Committee, but I, I wouldn't want to have, hit a guess as to how high that has to be.
Right.
Yeah. Is that it?
I can tell you though, just from based on experience, that law enforcement using aerial surveillance to spot things that are contraband such as, you know, people, well, that can they're growing weed and things like that, routine, um, so you can, you can use aerial surveillance and photographic evidence in order to bring, promote charges.
I thought you said...
That does exist.
I'm no attorney, but I did state a holiday ambulance in the first two.
Okay, on to old business up for a third reading, ordinance one seventy-one dash twenty-four, can I get motion by title number?
So moved, second.
Ordinance one seventy-one twenty-four, ordinance approving editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinances providing for the adoption and publication of new matter and updated and revised codified ordinances, repealing ordinances that conflict therewith and declaring an emergency.
Uh, so this has to do with the, uh, past two years legislation, um, the, I talked to the Law Director and she's reviewed all of those and, uh, said that they were okay for, um, updating. This is the third reading. If anyone has any questions, if not, I'd like to make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Ms. Traynor?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance one seventy-one dash twenty-four is passed, on to ordinance one seventy-two dash twenty-four, can I get motion by title and number?
So moved, second.
Ordinance one seventy-two twenty-four, an ordinance amending section one oh six two of the codified ordinances.
So this is the, uh, the park rules, they were changed and then we amended them in the, at the last meeting, so that's really it.
What our council wishes?
I make a motion to adopt.
Second.
As amended.
Second.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Reed's?
Yes.
Ms. Traynor?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Reed's?
Yes.
Ms. Traynor?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Ms. Traynor?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Reed's?
Yes, sir.
Resolution one seventy-seven dash twenty-four is passed, on to resolution one seventy-eight dash twenty-four, can I get motion by title and number?
So moved, second.
Resolution one seventy-eight twenty-four, resolution increasing appropriations for the Morpsy dues.
I think this was a request for a five thousand dollar increase in appropriations, the Morpsy dues are actually somewhere in the range of forty-seven, forty-eight hundred dollars, uh, so this should be more than ample to cover said Morpsy dues, which I believe is an annual, uh, uh, recurrence, yeah. When are those dues due?
Uh, I mean, if you want me to go on, uh, wrong, if you want to, if you want to suspend and just get it off there, I'll do it anyway.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Resolution 174-24 is passed, on to second reading, resolution 177-24, can I get motion by title number?
So moved, second.
Resolution 177-24, a resolution increasing appropriations for office supplies.
I think this was a $1,000 request for the city council to buy office supplies. All I got.
All right.
Any other discussion?
I make a motion to go ahead and adopt it.
Suspend, you mean suspend?
Suspended.
It's the second reading? Okay.
I'm sorry, make a motion to suspend the three reading rule, I stand corrected.
I'll second, I'll second.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes, sir.
Resolution 177-24 is passed, on to resolution 178-24, can I get motion by title number?
So moved, second.
Resolution 178-24, resolution increasing appropriations for the Morpsy dues.
I think this was a request for a $5,000 increase in appropriations. The Morpsy dues are actually somewhere in the range of $4,700, $4,800. So this should be more than ample to cover said Morpsy dues, which I believe is an annual recurrence, yeah. When are those dues due? Do you know, Chris?
Uh, I mean, if you want me to go on, on the problem, if you want to, if you want to suspend it, just get it off there. Do it anyway.
Are they due the first?
Council's wishes?
I'll make a motion to suspend.
I'll second.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes. Motion to adopt?
Second.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Resolution 178-24 is passed, on to resolution 179-24, can I get motion by title number?
So moved, second.
Resolution 179-24, resolution increasing appropriations to purchase trash cans in the downtown area.
So this has to do with the purchase of trash cans throughout town? They would match the current trash cans, I believe, is that right?
Also be very helpful if we get a Dora.
Yeah, we're trying, we're, we're still looking at which ones we want to buy, but we have some that are very similar. It would be great to be able to get this passed too, because I'd love to try to order them and get them in before Old Fashioned Christmas.
Is this, is this just in the historic district area, or is this all other locations in town?
Yeah, well, so we're going, we'll move, I believe what we're looking at doing is moving the ones that are on South Main Street to Main and High, so they're, and then put the new ones down that way. So, kind of sort of.
You were expecting to buy four, is that correct? Thought?
I don't have my notes from, but it was something like that, yeah.
I think it was four, yeah.
Yeah.
So, and they, they all mentioned it earlier, and you took two with the Dora. So it seems like part of the Dora program I read through showed where trash cans were going to be placed. This was not originally brought up to be part of the Dora, but it'll, it'll fit into that plan.
So I'll make a motion to suspend the three reading rule.
I'll second.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Moved to adopt.
No second.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Resolution 179-24 has passed, on to ordinance 180-24, can I get a motion by title number?
So moved, second.
Ordinance 180-24, an ordinance amending section 660 of the codified ordinances.
This deals with the storage of junk vehicles.
I believe this was brought up at the last council meeting. There was one word uncovered, missed in paragraph A1 of the ordinance. Talked to the law director, she sent out a corrected copy, but I think to make it legal, you probably should amend to say to remove that, since it was first presented with it in there.
So I'll move that we amend the language that was presented under 660.07, storage of junk vehicles, A1. In this sentence that says that is left uncovered, about the fifth sentence down. That is left uncovered in the open on private property for more than 72 hours. That will make that consistent with the word, taking out the word uncovered throughout this. So there will strike the word uncovered.
I'll second.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Moved to adopt.
You have to suspend.
I'll make a motion to suspend the three reading rule.
Second.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
No.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ordinance 180-24 is passed, on to resolution 181-24, can I get a motion by title number?
So moved, second.
Resolution 181-24, resolution approving an easement.
The two, 181 and 182 are both similar, it's the alley we have, and the two neighbors, they kind of, they own part. If they tried to sell it, it would cause those people problems, to just trying to.
Be a good neighbor.
Be a good neighbor.
Yeah, so 181 is the Dennis parking lot, actually their driveway to pull in. And then 182 is around Lynch Family Funeral Home, part of their parking and a structure, like a garage that's on it.
That includes everything from this parking lot over to School Street, is that right?
No. So what it is, is when we were doing some investigation on some stuff, we found out that there was a strip of land that encompasses the Dennis parking lot, pretty much a drive of where they pull in. And then it kind of, then there was another piece that cut back the other way behind Lynch Family Funeral Home. And they were, it was still owned by the school, it was never transferred to the city when we took all this property over. School transferred it to us, and that's why we are, that's why we're doing these, for the easements, to give them those easements.
And this doesn't affect that house that's in between?
Yeah.
That's the alley, that alley is not being recorded.
Yeah, that's, we'll do the alley later. So that, that's a quote unquote alley.
Okay.
So we're trying to clean pieces up kind of in order in a way.
Any other discussion? All right, on to resolution 182-24, can I get a motion by title number?
So moved, second.
Resolution 182-24, a resolution approving an easement.
This deals with the same thing we was just talking about, except the other property next door.
On to resolution 183-24, can I get a motion by title number?
So moved, second.
Resolution 183-24, resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into collective bargaining agreements between the City of London and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Unit 1428.
So this covers the office workers, the street, and the sanitation department under this agreement. We have 30 days to ratify, or 30 days to do this after they've voted to ratify this. If we don't vote on it, it still goes through after the 30 days, it just automatically happens. I don't know if any, I haven't heard any complaints from anyone about this. So I see no reason to not suspend the rules tonight so that we can do this in a timely fashion. So saying that, I move that we suspend the rules tonight.
Second.
I'll second. Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Yes.
Resolution 183-20-24 is passed, on to new business, ordinance 184-24, can I get a motion by title number?
So moved, second.
Ordinance 184-24, an ordinance creating a designated outdoor refreshment area.
Yes, I'm excited about this, this should be good for the downtown area. And the public hearing is November 7th. Can't suspend the three reading rule until after that.
Any discussion on this?
Yeah, I don't think I found the answer that, it, it says that, let me find it again. That it had to be, maybe sought for by two, two businesses, I believe, in Appendix C. I don't know if I know who those were, is that listed in here? Is, well, like, is Appendix C in here? I didn't highlight this, so I'd have to go back, and I just seen it a second ago, so I need to scroll a little slower so I find it. It also said qualified, so there's a part, there's a couple of parts, to date at least nine qualified permits have been identified and proposed. So we do have that many permits in that area, and that says, that's also, pardon me, in Exhibit C. So you had mentioned earlier that it was a, well, when I asked, it was a business that came to you, or businesses that came to you first. So I'm just looking for a little clarification, since this is the first reading. I did have somebody ask if I could explain this, and I don't know if I did a, a good job explaining that or not.
But what are you asking about the two?
Well, it, there's a, there's a part here that mentions that I think that there had to be two.
This is encompass a minimum of two qualified permit holders, and there's at least, there's a minimum of two down there already.
Do we have?
Looks like we have a total of nine, yeah, we have nine.
Do we have a, am I missing Appendix C? Or Exhibit C?
No.
There's Exhibit G.
List of, is it?
It's the list of the parcel numbers, I think, hold on.
I don't, I don't see it, I see Exhibit B, I guess, there, written in, oh, there we go, I'm sorry, there's, there's the C.
It's the permit holders.
Okay. So Jim's Bar. 15 Below, Doing Businesses, London 101, Gin Mill, the Eagles will be involved in this too, so it'll extend over to them?
That's a private club, so. Are they on there?
He said it was flexible, how that math was going to be, depending on the input.
Ronnety's.
F O E's on there.
The State Theater.
F O E 950, that's the Eagles.
And Shan's, you're right, right, so I see them listed here now.
Yeah, they're broken out by class of permit, if you look under the third column, we've got D1, D2, those are, D5, those are all different classifications of permit, which is why we, as well as 101, are listed twice. Because we have, we have a D1 and a D2, they have a D2 and a D3.
Okay. So for the, for the uninitiated, how about, how about the two-minute explanation of what a Dora does?
Who are you asking?
Well, I was gonna, whoever wants to take the lead on that?
It allows, it allows people to walk around in designated areas with alcohol.
Okay, so it will, we would have a defined area?
Yeah.
That is, that this document helps determine?
Right.
And, and is it only beer, is it beer and, and spiritous liquors?
I believe it's only but.
It's all they buy.
Okay.
All they buy.
It's just like down at Great American Ballpark, right across, there's, I don't know if that's, I don't think it's Pete Rose Way, but there's eight, 10 bars there, and that whole thing is a Dora. And it's, every time we go by there, places, I mean, there's thousands of people there, the place is hopping all the time.
From business to business that they're allowing in without getting.
Right, so I, so I've been to Great American a number of times and enjoyed that, so I don't have a problem with it. But that's a more of a confined area, right there in front of Great American Ballpark. It's pretty much one large city block, but both sides. I don't know if it extends anywhere beyond that point. I did see in the legislation that I guess the city could have up to three Doras within the city. So this would be the first one, if, it may be the only one we ever have.
Or need.
I do have a question, because, and this is, I'm just not familiar enough with how the Dora works legally, but I do know that, how strict the liquor department is, and that you can't have conflicting permits. So if the city should procure a festival temporary permit, I don't think that resides in, I think that's in conflict with the Dora. I think you wouldn't be able to have beer trucks and things like that at downtown festivals if the, if it's in a designated Dora. Correct me if I'm wrong on that, but that would be my guess.
We can look into that.
And, and another question I have, this is a seven day a week?
There was a, what did the, the contract, it says it in the legislation, I'm pretty sure, doesn't it?
I would assume, since most of this area is a dry area that is not permitted to serve liquor on Sundays, that the Dora would only fall as it exists within the license of the individual permit holders, so.
So it is, it's on here for seven days a week?
But nobody can sell it on Sunday, so it will effectively only be six days a week.
11 a.m. to 10 p.m.
Right.
And there's plenty of nice Doras around.
Yeah.
You know, Hilliard has a nice one, so Greg, if you want to take me down there and buy me a few drinks, we can check it out and walk around a little bit.
Walk around.
I'm willing to ride with you, you got to drive though.
I'll, I'll drive and, and you can imbibe?
There you go.
Plus a copy of this ordinance has to go to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control and Ohio Department of Public Safety, so.
We're working on that.
We'll be, we'll be checking, I mean, there's a lot of checks and balances here.
I think the one, I think the one in Hilliard's probably really, if you want to see one that's, I feel is robust and thriving, that one in Hilliard, man, they've always got something going on.
Grove City too.
Grove City's got one too.
Grove City down by Columbus, and, yep. They're, they do pop out at you as you drive through, you can, you can, Grandview has one down, Grandview between, is it Third and First?
Third and.
Third and First, but you, but you, as you're driving through the city, they definitely pop out at you, and I, and, you know, if they pop out at you, that's business, so, it's going to help the businesses, I think.
So just a reminder that we're going to have that public hearing November 7th. But if anybody is watching, listening, has questions, we still have two more meetings for that.
All right, anything else? Okay, we'll go on to roundtable, Michael?
Well, thanks to everybody who's tuned in, nothing else? Oh, come to the Palooza, definitely come to the Palooza, there's so much going on there, and so, come to the Palooza. Oh, yeah, you know, we're having this thing called the Second Annual Eyeball for the London Lions Club, and it's on October 19th. October the 19th. I should know that, like, yeah, it's, it's going to be a good time, we got a costume party, got some dancing, going to have some brewskis. We got the pumpkin carving, we are actually going to have a pumpkin carving contest, but you bring the pumpkin already carved. I, I think we need to, we might have to clarify that. And again, that's all on October 19th, from 8 to 11.
Thank you, John?
I just want to mention, Mr. Minner, myself, I've worked with him since I, back in 84, when he was Fire Chief, and then many years in his, his own council together. And he was a hard worker, sometimes hard to get along with, but very good, and he, he liked what he liked. he liked, and he'll be missed, he's a very hard worker. And also want to mention, since we had the storm last week, we didn't lose any major trees, all of the work we put in earlier in the year to try to alleviate anything, we had a lot of small limbs and leaves down, but nothing major, so thank everybody for earlier in the year passing, help us a little more, thank you.
Shannon?
Planning for Old Fashioned Christmas has been well underway, we're making great headway, if you're interested in volunteering, sitting on a committee, or assisting in any fashion, please reach out to myself, E. Free Love, or any of the other people associated with Old Fashioned Christmas. December first.
Thank you. Andy?
Public Service Committee meeting is next Tuesday at eight at five o'clock in the room next door.
Rich?
I want to thank all city employees for jobs well done. Want to congratulate the London Football Team, six and oh, traveling up forty-two, up north tomorrow night to play that team up north. If you can't be there, you can listen to it on 105 FM, and we'll bring it to you. Thank you, Lord, for the rain, thank you, thank you, thank you. If we could, I attended Mr. Minter's funeral today and his viewing, I also did Mr. DeLong's viewing and his funeral. Since they were both employees of the city, I took Mr. Minter's place when he, when he retired from city council. I'd like to take, if we could, let's, let's have a moment of silence for both of these people, if we could. Thank you.
Brent?
Well, I was taking a tree to the dump that got blown over the other day, and I saw the new trash cans of Merrimack, and they look nice, is that the kind you're going to get for downtown? They look durable too, so... Yeah. Great. And I'm, and I didn't know you were looking at Elfer, but I'm, you can't go wrong with them, that's a good choice, I think, great choice, that's all I have.[1708.82]